Okay, are we about ready, guys? Are you all ready? Hey, before we start, Brian did I have surgery?
Yeah.
Wow. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our City Commission meeting of December the 2nd. I'll call our meeting to order. Call a roll, please.
Stevens, Agee, here. Herod.
Here.
Maynard.
Here.
Hall, Winteringer.
Here.
Smith. We have a call.
We do have a call. Is there someone here from the Ministerial Alliance? Pastor Perkins? If you're able to stand, please stand. Pastor Perkins will lead us in our invocation.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we pray for your blessings to be upon all who are here tonight. We give you thanks for the community members who are here. We thank you for our elected officials. We pray, God, for your wisdom and your discernment to be upon all of them as they seek to do what is good for Shawnee and good for all. Again, we pray for your blessings and we give you thanks. In your name, amen.
Let me flag the flags. Go ahead, yeah.
Attention. I pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank each and every one of you for coming here this evening, and it's nice to see all of you. And we'll go right through the agenda. Item number one is consider approval of our agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. High Commissioner Winteringer and Vice Mayor Herod. Call a roll, please, ma'am.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Herod?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Agee?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two is consider approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Agee. And please note, Mr. Smith is here. Glad to see you, sir. Call a roll, please.
Herod?
Aye.
Agee?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item number three is commissioners' comments. Ladies and gentlemen, would you like to share anything with us?
John was still gonna have the Christmas prayer asleep, right?
From what I'm hearing, yes, it's on.
I was advised by Mr. Erickson that it's never been canceled, and we weren't gonna cancel it, no matter what.
He's not gonna be guilty of that, sir.
Well, I hope everyone in here attends, and I know it'll be cold. You can hide behind a building or something and enjoy the parade, and the north wind blocks off of you. It's a...
Mayor wants everybody standing behind him on the platform up there to break the wind off of him.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, I'll move on to item number four, citizens' participation. We open up our floor at this time for anybody that would like to make comments on anything, enlighten us on something that's going on and we may not be aware of, or anything you'd like to share with us. Well, being none of those, then, we'll move to item number five. City manager's presentation of the Oklahoma Municipal League certificates to employees with 25 or more years of service with the city of Shawnee. Mr. McDougal, would you handle this, please, sir?
Absolutely, Mayor. It is my honor to present to you five city employees that are being recognized by the Oklahoma Municipal League for having 25 years of service or more. I am only seeing three of them in the audience. Carl, David, and Mike Jackson. The five individuals are Chief David Short, Randy Newton in Animal Control, Mike Jackson at the Expo, Carl Jacobs, and Michael Lichten.
Were there no requirements on them having to be so old when they went to work? Look how young they all look.
Except David got white hair.
Yeah, but he's got hair. I can't see that.
Oh.
Thank you, sir.
One of the...
Oh, you guys, if you want to talk.
Item number six, presentation of a website for the Parks Department created by the Oklahoma Baptist University College of Nursing Students. Mr. Bryce?
Mayor and commissioners, I'm not gonna introduce every one of them. They're gonna come up and introduce themselves as they speak. There's a few of them that's gonna talk tonight. They have a presentation over a website that they developed. They had a class project that they had to do with health and wellness, and they decided to do one over the Parks Department and build a website so that everybody would be aware of what there is to do in the parks. So, I'm gonna let them begin.
Mr. Bryce, before they get on, why would the nursing department, are they gonna tell us why they would, the School of Nursing, do one on our parks?
Absolutely.
Great, please tell us that. It's a great story.
So, we did this project...
State your name, please.
I am Elizabeth Galloway.
Okay.
Would you sign in? I'm sorry.
You have to sign in, and talk right into that microphone, because we have people on TV that wanna see and hear your exciting presentation.
Our project was to create a website for Shawnee.
I'm gonna go over the assessment data that we gathered about the community, and then we'll get into more depth about the project as we all go through. This is the area of Shawnee that we have measured. I don't have to say on that screen, but it's just the longitude and latitude and...
Can we dim those lights? Is there any way we can do something with the lights? Sorry, old men, I can't see, so the young guys can. There you go.
Better?
Uh-huh.
All right, and then just population and just the condition of town.
Yeah, that's good. Now, can you see?
I wanna see so far.
Perfect.
Here's some demographics that we looked up about the Shawnee community. There's 52.7% female, 47.3% male, and then there's different races, and the median income. Amenities and open space, this is where we found all of the parks and recreation facilities in Shawnee that are available to the public, and then we also found that they were difficult to find if you didn't have a working knowledge of the community. So, that's where our project started. Schools and education, there's a lot of schools in Shawnee, and they seem to be meeting the needs of the community. Communication in Shawnee, we found different signs, multimedia, and other communications, the newspaper, tornado sirens, and radio. Other information we found about Shawnee is residents see it positively and growing, and we talked to some non-residents, mostly on the college campus, and that's what we gathered. Next.
My name's David R. Jones, and I'll be going over all the park specifics. So, for the reason for our project, when I first moved to Shawnee about three years ago, four years ago, I had a two-year-old, and I wanted to take her to parks whenever we had free time. And one thing I noticed was it was really hard to get information on where I should go and what she should do. And so, I found a lot of my time spent just driving around town trying to find what was available and what she could do. And I always thought, you know, someone should create a website about this so that when they moved to the community, they'll have an easier time than I did. So, that was kind of like an idea I had in my head about three or four years ago. Then along came a nursing project requirement for our class to develop some sort of way to increase the healthiness of a community in a positive way, and we felt like we could merge the two into one idea, do something great for the community, and also meet the needs of our class. When we did a little bit of research, we noticed that in the state of Oklahoma and also the county of Potawatomi, they had some of the highest obesity and lowest physical inactivity rates in the nation, actually. We did some little further information, or we went for a little bit more. When we did our assessments, we found some, sorry, I'm not used to reading off paragraphs. We found some really good research showing that if people could have a little bit more access to public parks and recreational facilities in their area, then they would actually increase their needs. We found this really great article put out by Parks Departments and Recreation Services, and it showed that a lot of the reason why people didn't have parks or didn't use parks was because they didn't know about the parks. And they didn't know they had one maybe 10 minutes away. If they could find one that was within 10 minutes of their house, either by walking or driving, they would be more apt to use it. We also found that the number-one reason for using a park for elderly was to take their grandkids there and to use it for walking. When we looked at some of the CDC reports on elderly, the older you get, the less active you are, starting in your adolescence and moving older. Each 10 years, you will become less physically active. So, we thought if parks were available to the elderly, we could help with that number as well. Proximated parks obviously showed more use if you had them near your house. You're more likely to get out and use them. 10 minutes was the number that they showed in there, that if they could have one within 10 minutes of their house, they would use them. On the end there, I put, "Parks, schools could be used for parks." This was an idea put forth by the New York City Parks Department, because they found that they lacked parks throughout the city, but if they had 900 schools, then they could easily increase parks in needed areas. And this could be an idea for future parks, instead of developing new ones, and the cost of finding land and whatnot, is to find ways to open school parks during the summertime. We conducted a survey. Hey, Danielle, how many people were in the survey?
Twenty.
Okay. It was a small survey, and we asked people why they are currently using parks, and the number-one reason was to take their grandkids or kids to the park. And then a little bit more into that was leisure activities, exercise, and relaxation. Also, going with our goals, we used some of the Healthy People 2020 goals. They put these goals out every year, every 10 years, to figure out what is necessary. We felt by being able to incorporate parks into people's lives and improving the access to them, they would be able to meet some of these goals put forth by 2020. So, this was our goal, once we had evaluated all the information, and we had decided on this project as what we were gonna do. The goal of this project is to work towards the Healthy People 2020 goal of improving health, fitness, and quality of life through daily physical activity by increasing the community's awareness of parks and other free facilities for recreational use. This will be done through the creation of a website where people can easily access information and pictures about parks. Once we had our goal, we set some objectives for ourselves. We wanted to increase the amount of pavilions reservations. Currently, it's about 400 a year. That goes up and down. I think it was 316, 500 one year. So, in the future, we hope that 2014, we'll see a little more than 440 reservations. We hope to have at least 1% of the population access the website. By December, currently, we've had 200 different people access it. We also hope to have the increased community resources available on the new webpage. We've got that accomplished. The website is done. For some of our long-term objectives, the physical inactivity, these are some reports they put out by the CDC annually. We hope that we can help decrease physical inactivity by 5%, and help also decrease obesity across all ages by 5%. For the website resources, the cost of this, we had some things that were unmeasurable, like gasoline and time, but as far as the web domain and monthly access fees, we were able to accomplish this by spending about $100. This is our timeline. We were able to meet all of our objectives and all of our goals for making sure that we could get it done. We'll be discussing a little bit what we did for advertising here. To get the word out, we talked to a lot of different people in the town. We had a few roadblocks, but a lot of those were helped push through with James Bryce. We spoke on the local radio station. We posted on Facebook. We're on current websites, including the city's website, which we're seeing increased traffic on since it's been put up, so we're hoping that becomes a nice gateway to the website. Word of mouth, we try to tell, anytime we see someone, we try to tell them about it. Up there in the right-hand corner, you'll see Flyers and Middle School. It's actually pre-K through middle school, and I was over at a friend's house tonight, and he said he saw a flyer in it. He just hadn't had a chance to visit the website yet, so we know it's out there, and people have seen them. And future, we haven't been on Channel 3 yet, but we hope that we can change that. I think we just did. Okay, is this one? Yes. Our "Out Come Objectives," this is looking at our objectives and our goals we set forth for ourselves.
My name is Danielle Taylor, and I'm happy to see you guys tonight. Our short-term goals is 1% of the population to access the website by December of 2013. Currently, we have about 200 visits to the website. To create the website by December of 2013, and we actually finished it in November. Long-term goals, we want to decrease inactivity by 5% in Potawatomi County according to the CDC report in 2013. We want to decrease obesity in Potawatomi County by 5% according to the CDC report in 2014, and we want to increase park facility reservations by 10% in the year following completion of the website. Overall evaluation, we want the project to be seen positively by the community, short-term goals to be met or close to being met, the nursing process utilized appropriately, project was successful and gave the community a needed resource for information, and the project will have a lasting effect. I'm gonna say thank you to James Bryce, the Director of Operations for the City of Shawnee Parks and Recreation Department. He gave us a history of the park website, helped with the current master plan and the content, and he was very supportive, helped us with media attention. Also, I'd like to mention Tom Terry at this point. He has also been a strong representative in the community with the parks, and he looked at our website, gave us some pointers and some advice, and he was an excellent resource. And this is the website. They will do this part.
Yeah, these are all screenshots from the website. This is what you'll see when you visit our website. And this next picture will be as you scroll down the page. Across the top, you'll see home, parks, maps, and reservation. Those are different pages you can visit on there. We'll go over those one by one. As you scroll down the page, you'll see a little bit about why we did it, why we put it together. You also see a little explanation about the tabs at the top. We click on Parks Website. This is what you're gonna see. Each park has its own picture, and as you scroll down the page, you'll see that we have as many pretty pictures as we could of your parks. And it seemed like every time we had finished, we kept finding more parks. There was even a new park put in called the Labyrinth Park over on Independent Street. It's not a public park, or it's a public park, but it's not by the city, but we figured we'd throw it in anyways. If you click on one of these, we're gonna say we're gonna click on Dean Wydenet Park. It'll bring you to this page. It allows the user to click through different pictures and show them the different types of equipment they'll find at the park, including this new, yeah, this is awesome. My kid loves it. Once they've gone through all the different pictures of the park, they can scroll down the page and find a little bit more additional information. We've tried to include a little bit of history of the parks, like the Centennial Park and why different parks are created. And on the right side here, you'll find a physical location, a lat and long for GPS users, and if you click on the map symbol there with the dot in it, it'll take you to a map function we created with Google Maps. It'll show you an overview of where it is, and it allows you to scroll out and see every park in the city of Shawnee. And all you have to do is click on one of those dots. It'll give you a bit of information of what's in the park, and if you click on the link inside of there, it takes you to the park that you clicked on, so it leads right back to the website. From this, we're gonna click on the map page. You can see that you can access the map just by going by here. You don't have to go to the bottom of the page. It takes you straight there. On the left side, it has every park in town, and I think it has the ones out by the lake as well. And it also has the shopping mall, because they allow mall walkers to go in there throughout the year. We can close this window. It takes us back to Shawnee Parks, and we'll click on Reservations tab at the top. The Reservations tab was something that we wanted to improve on in the future. Right now, this allows users to find out information about different pavilions and other rental buildings in parks, and allows them to call the free, or the number here in Shawnee to the Parks Department to reserve. In the future, we really hope that this would have some sort of online reservation system with a calendar so people could book it themselves. It includes pictures of the pavilion that you can rent, information about how much it holds, and local things around it, like whether it has grills, trash cans, bathrooms, running water, lights, things like that. Right there at the top, you'll see the pavilion for the Isaac Walton Lake Park. We went out there in the fall time when the leaves were falling. It was beautiful. If you click on that, it shows you a larger image of what you have to see if you actually go out there. And this is for all of the different pavilions on there. You're able to get larger images like this. And that is our website.
And the address of that website?
It's shawneyparks.org.
Shawnee Parks, Charlotte.
Yeah, come and visit us.
I don't know what you say. Thank you is not a big enough word. What a great project for our community, and once again, people in our community continue to do wonderful things, and thank you for what you've done. And I know it will be used. I just think we just gotta get more people to be aware of it, because it's new, and we need to work hard at trying to tell our friends, the ones in this room and everything, you gotta go see this website, because this is exciting and very wonderful. Thank you so much for your efforts. Hope you reach your goals and far exceed them, actually. Thank you.
I do have a question. You don't have like a target list of people you wanna have them lose weight, right? I mean...
Could you say that again?
It's not specific names.
Don't get first. Come here. Okay, all right.
I have a question, too. Who's going to maintain that once you're finished?
Middle of this month, we're gonna hand over all ownership to the website to James Bryce and the Parks Department. He's happy to take it on. He's been with us since the beginning. In fact, when we came and presented this to him, he's like, "Well, this is great, because I already had this idea. I've just been trying to put it together for a few years."
Okay, great.
It was great that we came along when we did, and everybody's happy.
Okay, thank you.
It sure was great that you came along when you did. That's wonderful.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Hope you enjoy it.
Item number seven, discussion, consideration, and possible action on its ordinance amending Chapter 19, Article 11 of Section 19, 726, Traffic Schedules, Division 5, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, Reducing the Speed Limits Where Not Otherwise Specified by Law, Providing for Repeal, Providing for Severability, and Providing for Codification. Staff report, we approved this at the last meeting. Do we need a...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is just an official change of the ordinance from what was 30 miles per hour down to 25 miles per hour.
We handled this last week. So, the chair, then, will entertain a motion to approve this matter? Make that motion. Second? Motion and a second.
I believe you just read the title, so I don't think I need to.
Huh?
The whole title's the ordinance.
Oh, really? That's all it is, huh?
Yeah, it's just about it.
Okay, so I didn't mean to take your job reading that. I just always have read them. Okay, let's, we don't need an emergency vote on this, so let's just call a roll, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Agee?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number nine, discussion, consideration, and possible action. Do I need to read, if I read this, you're not gonna have anything to do.
That's right.
Huh? Well, let's...
Right.
Okay, making it an offense to fail to make reports and remittances as required. Call on the city attorney for a report, please, ma'am.
We have discussed a couple of times tools that we might have that would allow us to assist the Oklahoma Tax Commission in collecting sales tax that was not remitted or reports that were not filed. One of the things that we can do is prosecute in municipal court anyone who fails to make a report, fails to make their remittances, or files a false report. This is, the ordinance does that. I don't think it was clear in our code that we had the right to do that. It's an all-new section. The penalty would not exceed $500. The way this would work is that we would continue to review the list of businesses provided by the Oklahoma Tax Commission that have not filed, filed but not remitted, or where there may be a fraudulent return. We would send them a letter from the city telling them they need to make those payments to the Oklahoma Tax Commission. We'd give them a certain amount of time to do that. At the end of that time, we'd check with the Oklahoma Tax Commission. If it still had not been paid or the report's not filed, we would file in municipal court based on an affidavit from the Oklahoma Tax Commission. We would not be writing letters to or prosecuting businesses that are in payment plan, for example. If they're working with the Tax Commission, they're in a payment plan, if they're trying to get it worked out, we'll stay out of that. But if they fail to comply with their payment plan and the Tax Commission's unable to do anything about it, we would go forward. I have looked at the current list, and a lot of the ones that are on there, those businesses are long gone. We're not going to find them. They don't have any assets. It won't be necessary to spending time on those. There are a few that possibly we could locate through our resources in a way the Tax Commission has not been able to, either through county records or some other method. I don't anticipate we would ever file very many of these, but it's just a matter of having another tool to make sure that the businesses who comply with the law don't get punished for doing so by people who don't comply.
Is that it?
That's it.
That's it?
This doesn't have anything about going in auditing business or anything else. It's just that list from the Tax Commission itself.
Yes, sir.
And we're not going, the Tax Commission wanted to determine whether they should be paying taxes or not paying taxes and things like that.
That's correct. We'll work off their determinations.
Does the state get involved after we get, if we get involved, or are they already doing their job?
Well, there's, they have, because they have some new computer programs, they have been able to step up their own ability to track people and to make contact. They have some automated letters they didn't have in the past, so they're able to do some of that. But there are always going to be more businesses they need to work with and encourage than they have people to do it. That's just the nature of the beast. So, we would just be stepping in kind of when all else failed. I have discussed this with a city attorney who has done it in two cities. Once the word was out and they wrote the letters, in one city, they've never filed a complaint in municipal court, and these are large cities, and a larger than, one of them's larger than we are, and the other one's about the same size. And in another, they only did to start making the papers. People don't wanna be embarrassed, so now if they get a letter from the city, they decide this is now worse than the Tax Commission coming after them, and they pay up, and they've not had to do this. So, I don't expect this to be some huge workload. We'll generate the letters based off on our review, and the Tax Commission will know we're doing it. But it's... But it's really not going to be any more time-consuming or probably less time-consuming than the collection letters we write to the Urban Renewal Authority once a month now. And we don't handle the money. The money goes to the agency.
Any more discussion?
Just a quick question. This is all coordinated with the Oklahoma Tax Commission, so there's no duplication of effort, right?
It will be, it will only be parties that they've not been able to get, collect themselves or work out a payment plan with.
Any other further discussion? Chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
Should we adopt our ordinance?
Second. We have a motion and a second? Can you have it called?
This is an ordinance admitting Article 2, Division 4 of Chapter 25 Sales Tax of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, making it an offense to fail to make reports and remittances as required or making a false or fraudulent report, setting a penalty, providing for repeal, providing for severability, providing for codification, and declaring an emergency.
Before we vote on this, I would ask the city attorney, city manager, there's been quite a bit of concern about auditing and, you know, auditing business and so forth. Is there any way, would it seem after the first of the year that we have kind of a public hearing or a public meeting to claim, you know, what the city's responsibility is? Okay, I think everybody's pretty busy through the holidays, but if we could do that after the Christmas holidays, after the first of the year, then just set a date.
I'd rather do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, call roll, please.
Harrod?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Winter Ringer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we need to pass an emergency motion on this matter. Okay, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Harrod. A second by who? I'm sorry. Commissioner Smith. Call roll, please.
Harrod?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Winter Ringer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I don't know the procedure here. Is there a way to skip this item number 10? Because if you look at the content, snow and ice, we don't want any of that. Huh? I guess we better do it then. Okay, item number 10. Mr. Lynch?
Did we get more than one this year, Doc? No. I thought we were going to have two.
Can this be done in the next year or two?
Might have to be.
We'll certainly work on it. I think, I think they're ready.
Don Lynch, Emergency Management Director. Following your directions to staff, we solicited proposals from contractors for assistance in snow and ice removal from city streets. We sent packets, notifications to 12 vendors that we have known about in the past that our construction companies do business in that area, some of which have done business with us in the past. We also advertised this notice in the Shawnee News Star and published it on our website, which also went out on a Twitter feed and Facebook posting for any individuals that might be interested to receive it that way. As was noted earlier, we have only received one proposal. This proposal is from Silver Star Construction Incorporated of Moore, Oklahoma. We've asked them to provide us with a number of equipment and operators available. We requested a truck with eight-foot snowplow, salt spreader, and operator, and any other alternate equipment that they might have. They have five of the trucks with eight-foot snowplows, salt spreaders, and operators that they could make available to us. And we asked for the total cost per hour to operate them, including labor, maintenance, fuel, tires, and everything else, on a time schedule. The first column being 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Secondly, from 5:00 p.m. through 8:00 a.m. Monday through Friday. Then on Saturdays and Sundays and holidays. And we added something this year that we haven't done in the past, a cost to pre-stage the equipment at our public work center. So it'd be here, ready to go. If we saw that we might need it, it would be here and then could get out on the roads faster. So those were the requests that we made. Silver Star's proposal for the truck with the eight-foot snowplow, salt spreader, and operator for 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday is $135 an hour. 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. Monday through Friday, $145 an hour. Saturdays and Sundays, $160 an hour. Holidays, $160 an hour. And to pre-stage would be the same price as based upon the timeframe with a six-hour minimum required. For road graders that they have available, $145 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. $175 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. Monday through Friday. $190 Saturdays and Sundays and $190 on holidays. Their mobilization fee, I'm sorry, their pre-staging fee would be the same cost plus a $375 mobilization fee, which covers the delivery and trucking to get those vehicles here with a six-hour minimum required. And then front-end loaders, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, $115 per hour. 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. Monday through Friday, $128 per hour. Saturdays and Sundays, $145 an hour. Holidays, $145 an hour. And pre-staging would be the same rates with a $355 mobilization fee with a minimum six-hour guarantee. The other note that we have on this, this vendor is only going to be available as a secondary provider to us in the event their equipment is not needed by other jurisdictions they already have contracts with in the area. Many times, you know, 30 miles one way or another in a winter storm makes a difference. Some of the vendors, some of the cities that they already have contracts with may not need them and they would make that available to us should we choose to sign a contract with them. But it will only be on a secondary basis as their equipment is not needed in other locations and will be available, they would make it available to us. Still wanted to make that clear. I presented this to the city engineer this evening. He's familiar with Silver Star Construction, says that they are a reputable firm, and staff would recommend that you award a contract to them on this basis. So we would have that as a tool that we can use when we do need it. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
We're not posted to award.
I'm sorry?
We're not posted to award.
Only open, okay.
So...
If we can't do it, we'll have to come back to award.
Yes, my question is, what do we do if we get a big snow?
We have, we have emergency authorities. The city manager has emergency authority. We can, we can contract with them.
Okay, okay. So I know what you're not left out on.
I mean, the reason we do this, Commissioners, is because a lot of times these storms will become FEMA events. And when there are FEMA events and we've got documentation that we did it out pre-storm, then they'll help us reimburse these costs if we have some sort of a large debt. So you see these come by every year. Several years ago, we got three or four quotes and this year we only got one. I think it's become pretty popular in the state to do this as secondary. We try to buy a little bit more equipment every year and we can probably handle, you know, 90% of everything that Mother Nature throws our way on an annual basis. But last couple of years, we've had some real doozies for storms, so we've tried to do this so that we can provide a better service out there. If we have some sort of weather event, I'll let you know what's going on.
Based upon the city attorney's finding, I would withdraw that request and just request that you defer the award to the next meeting.
Motion to defer. Have a motion to defer? Do we have a second? Got it. Second by Vice Mayor Harrod. Call roll, please. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Winter Ringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number 11, new business.
Mr. Mayor, no new business this evening.
No new business. Then I will adjourn our commission meeting and then I will adjourn it to the Shawnee Airport Authority since we do have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda. So moved. Give a motion by Commissioner Winter Ringer.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Winter Ringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Harrod?
Maynard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Any new business?
Mr. Mayor, no new business or administrative reports this evening.
Okay, that being the case, I will adjourn the Shawnee Airport Authority and I will call to order the Shawnee Municipal Authority. We do have a quorum. Item number one on it is consider approval of the consent agenda.
I'd like to discuss item D.
Do we just open it up for discussion, Mary, at this point?
Yes.
Sure. What would you like to discuss?
I just wondered why, why John, this wasn't included in the, in the federal bridge project of this water line. It was a downed line item for a particular reason on the water line that, replacing water line at the federal bridge.
Yeah, it's not part of the bridge structure. It's hanging underneath the bridge and it means to lower the cost. We just bid it out ourselves. Plus, early on, it was anticipated the SMA guys were going to replace it.
Did it out.
Yeah. If we bid it out with the actual bridge department, it would have been probably twice as much cost because that bridge contractor wouldn't have been the one to install it. He would have subbed it out. We don't anticipate doing any of this work until probably February after that.
Alright. I've always been, I thought that if you did suit it in a big contract, then it would be cheaper.
Not, not in something like this, not with the bridge contractor who's specialty is just the bridge work, structural work, because he'd have to sub it out. General, sub it out, they had 15, 20% of their initial cost.
Thank you.
I have a quick question also. Do we have the money, Ms. Montelli, to do some of these things in here that are listed? Huh? Okay, let's, I answered it, okay.
Should we adopt the consent agenda?
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second? Second. Second by Commissioner Winter Ringer. Call roll, please.
Harrod?
Aye.
Winter Ringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two, capital projects update. Mr. McDougal, could you bring us up? Oh, look who's coming in here.
He's a little better at this than I am.
I bet he is.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners. On August, looks like July 5th, the City Commission awarded that SMA can move forward and seek, we're asking authorization from the City Commission allowance staff to look into the engineering phase and possible seeking bids for eight general construction projects. And that'll be in your packet on number, page 15 and 16. And I was just going to report tonight that on number two, the filter media replacement and the filter troughs design is currently in the design phase and we're just about ready to take that to DEQ for approval. And Smith Roberts-Baldiswire is currently working on that for us. And then on number four, on page 16, we had a project in there for the Northside Sewer Plant to remove the sludge in the digester, number two, and the Aeration Basin, number two. Withward, we cleaned the diffusers in the Aeration Basin and replaced the diffusers in the digester. And that helps with the, the organics removal process for the Aeration Plan. And I just wanted to report that tonight and the rest of the projects, we have not started yet. We've currently been working with our engineering department and another, and HDR Engineering, that you may remember with the fluoride presentation, gave us a quote, but our, we think we can probably get that down a little bit and do some in-house work and get some of those projects knocked out in-house.
What about the pond or whatever you call it, just the river to get out?
That was an emergency, emergency project and we're going to put that out for bid probably in the next couple of weeks. Try to open it on the...
So what are you asking for on these eight items?
It's just an update. Just kind of show you where we're at.
Nothing, no action. It's not an action, it's just an update. Quick question while you're up here. What about the water study? I thought December was a completion date? Are we still thinking it's going to happen?
For the draft review, yes.
Oh, for the draft review? Okay.
We'll get the draft and we have 60 days to review the draft before we get to the final.
Okay.
Thank you.
New business?
Mr. Mayor, no new business.
Administrative reports.
We do have one administrative report and we have Cox here to talk about recycling, where we are in that process.
Good evening. Todd Edrock with Central Disposal. I wanted to come here tonight and kind of give you an update on where we are on recycling. It was my hopes that I was going to be on the agenda so we could put a contract before you. I've yet to figure out really what, there was a communication breakdown or something. They, the city attorney and our attorney have not gotten that together. That being said, I will make sure that we get on the next agenda. That's, it should be a short paragraph and the pricing that we've all discussed. I'm ready to go. Our vendors are ready to go, trucks, bins, the labor, the pamphlets and packets that go, that will be with all the bins. And we're ready for a March 1st rollout, which would have been 90 days from tonight. If I can get on the, if we can approve this on the next agenda, I can still work on that, on that March 1st. We'll have the bins set probably mid-February. I want to have them at least two weeks, each resident have it two weeks before the March 1st rollout. We'll do, as I said, paper, plastic, aluminum, glass, and cardboard will be at our facility on 7045. And from the calls that we've got, the people that we've talked to, there's, there's good momentum and there's definitely interest. I was with some of the city staff at the recycle conference that was in Stillwater, but I think it was a month ago, and got some, heard some other cities, kind of got some good ideas. We've met with Brian and about marketing, what, trying to come up with a plan and a budget, which Central, we said Central Disposal will be contributing to that as well, part to sustainable Shawnee on possible actions that they could help with. So we're ready to go. We just need to figure out why you don't have a contract in front of you. Said it should be pretty simple, the simplest procedure so far. Yes, sir.
What the deadline or date line on removing those stuff, or what are you going to call them on land?
We'll, we'll pull those as soon as, as soon as we start doing curbside. So there'll be probably maybe a week overlap, but as soon as we start, then we'll start pulling those. And those will be pulled from homeland and the ones at our facility will remain for cardboard and glass.
You mentioned a marketing plan. How far in advance of the actual delivery of the bins will people be notified of what's going to happen?
Our plan is, again, and we've, they've been preliminary at this point, so we don't have any deadlines or dates, but our, what we'd like to do is have an initial push of information to, to the residents and then specifically probably right around February, beginning of February and as we're setting the bins, and then have another marketing push six months later at that recycling conference. Stillwater, the city of Stillwater talked about how they had an initial push and they were, showed their participation rate. And then six months later, they saw by the client, it was, it was the new thing to do and then it kind of, it kind of dropped off. So they did another marketing push and they saw numbers spike again. So we would like to not see that dip six months. We'd like to see that continuing to trend up. So that's, that's the plan we have. And we'll continue to work with Brian on, on a budget and exactly radio, newspaper, and other forms of communication.
So nothing substantial has changed as far as the terms since we initially discussed it in the past?
No, 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 no. Terms have not changed. And that's, that's why I'd really like to be able to do something. I, I've talked to the city attorney. She says if I can give her something by the end of the week, she can mark it out by Wednesday she can mark it up by Wednesday so that she can be on the agenda. So, at least I've got a schedule of what I need to do now.
Did I hear you say you have your marketing materials ready?
I have talked to the printer, so I've got budget, and he knows, Demco, of exactly what we're putting in there. The, there'll be three things. A magnet of a bin that will show what's accepted. So, people are going to have that on their refrigerators. There'll be a full color, there'll be a full color, two-page flyer, which will show pictures exactly what you can put in here, what you can, and some information. Then there'll be a, another single, like a bright yellow, that says reminder. Recycling will start on this date, March 1st. So, they'll have the bins two, two weeks before, and they'll be able to at least have a reminder in there. Okay, don't forget, this is going to start on March 1st.
Well, could, when you do get them ready, I know you'll get them ready before they're actually ready to go. Could we have copies to the Commissioners, because that way we'll get familiar kind of ahead of the game to where...
Oh, yeah, yeah. And I've, I've talked to Demco. This is, this is basically kind of what you're going to have. It's going to be in a Ziploc, and it'll have the magnet, the reminder, and each one of these will be put in each bin that we set on the curbside. So, yeah, once, and I've got, as I said, I've got the quotes on every part of this and timelines and everything, so I...
Is the cost of that marketing included in the rate, or is that additional expense that the city's supposed to fund?
We're, we're, this is ours.
Okay.
I have a question. Do you deliver, when we put paper and things in the big bins, they go to the sheltered workshops here, right?
Yes.
You know, just for the public's information, I was at one of the sheltered workshops. And I've always not known whether I could put phone books in that big dumpster or what. But I was approached by people at the sheltered workshop that said, "We need those phone books desperately." Because there are some of the people that they have there that just tear a page out, you know, for recycling, and they need that. So, if you have phone books to the public and to all of us, if we put it in the, in the hopper, it gets to them, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, but they really say, "Bring any phone books you have." So, let's keep that in mind, because by them using the company, the sheltered workshops that we have here in town, puts a lot of people to work, and it's a wonderful thing for our community. So, a team effort, and thank you for doing it. Anything else? Was that your report?
That's it.
You got off? I thought it said here, call on Brian for the report.
But we can't do it.
Anything else? If not, we'll adjourn our meeting for the evening. Thank you all for coming.